I'd like to call the April 18th, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Mr. Owen, do we have a need for non-public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have a number of items of real estate and litigation to discuss.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, minutes of April 4th. Does anybody have any corrections or changes? I do. On page two, under "Library Trustees," it says, "The Library Liaison is Dave Bowers." That's wrong. That should be Brad Harriman, and the library should be added, and that should be Dave On page three, after the motion, and I'm not quite sure how to pronounce her name, Ms. Mazza, and I'd like Ofnu Durham put in there, so it's clear that she wasn't a Wolfboro resident. And also on page nine, limited to three minutes, right underneath there, her name, and I would also like at that spot, resident of New Durham. Does anybody else have any changes or corrections? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept as amended? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Done with the minutes. Next, set of minutes, April 11th, 2018. Does anybody have any changes to these?
I believe there's a correction needed on the second page.
Okay.
The second-to-last paragraph where it says the reception will be on Thursday, the 24th.
You're right.
It should be Wednesday, May 30th.
Thank you. You are absolutely right. Any other corrections or changes? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept as written?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. Done with the minutes. Now, we're going to start the public hearing. First one is Morning Star Lodge Number 17 to hold a trail run race on July 12th, 19th, 26th, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Start up, set up a start at 4:30 at the Abenaki Cross Country Ski Trail. Will you just say, state your name for the record?
Christina Falsick.
If you can tell us a little bit, this is your opportunity-
Okay.
...to get some information on the television and for the people here to hear what this is going to be about.
So, last year was the first race for the race series, and it was pretty small but still successful. We had a lot of, people have fun. Little kids came, adults came, so it was something for everybody. We're hoping to do a little bit better with spreading the word. We did get permission from down the street at Nordic Skier, once again, to put up markings and leave them up during the duration and then pull them after the third race series. And it's a benefit for the Morning Star Lodge 17, not-for-profit, and you guys should have the insurance information.
We do, we do have a complete packet. And your packet is complete.
Excellent. Yeah, so pretty much just doing the same thing that we did last year and trying to promote it and grow it and keep it fun.
Okay. Anybody in the audience would like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. One thing I want to point out, it's Thursdays, so people realize it's on a Thursday-
Okay, yeah, Thursday night.
-and not on the weekend. Usually ours are on the weekend. Board members, does anybody have any comments? Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to Morning Style Lodge Number 17 to hold trail running races on July 12th, 19th, and 26th, 2018, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Set up the start at 4:30, Abenaki Cross Country Ski Trail.
Can I have a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's the Lakes Region Conservation Trust to hold a orienteering on May 19th, 2018, from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., starting at Sewell Woods to Crescent Lake School to 29 Orchard Road. Ah, got somebody to speak. Will you state your name for the record?
I am Peter Goodwin, and it is an organization, actually, Up North Orienters, which is a part of the National Orienting Federation. The first part of this is going to be held at Sewell Woods. People will run an event there. Then they will move to Crescent Lake School, where they'll run another short sprint event. And then they'll move to 29 Orchard's Road, where they'll run two races. It is a group who will be coming probably from as far south as the Boston area. It is open to people in the town of Wolfboro and anywhere around. We are a nonprofit, and we hope to have 30 or 40 people competing in the event.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any members of the board have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit, Lakes Region Conservation Trust, to hold orienteering on, what is that actually? I was, you just explain that while I'm in the middle of this?
You move, use map and compass to, on a very detailed map, to go from point A to point B and ultimately back to where you started.
You need to join the Boy Scouts.
If you'd like a map, I have some in my hands.
Hold orienteering on May 19th, 2018, from 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., starting at Sewell Woods to Crescent Lake School to 29 Orchard's Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'm going to open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Park and Rec Department to hold Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day on May 11th, 2018, from 6:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. throughout town. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to this event? There you go.
Christine Collins, Recreation Director. This event has been going on for some time. We partner with Huggins Hospital. We set up two breakfast stations, so we have one at Cape Park and one at Huggins Hospital. And then we drive around with one of our town vehicles, just catching people. We give out T-shirts, we have snacks, and it's a good day. A lot of the schools get involved, and then we have the public. Sometimes they're not aware of it, so hopefully this will help let them know, because it's strange when people pull up and they're like, "Good job for walking." So, we just encourage you to bike and walk to work that day, and hopefully, no rain.
Yes, for sure. And no snow.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold Wolfboro Bike and Walk Day on May 11th, 2018, from 6:30 to 10:00 a.m. throughout the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
It should be 6:30 to 9:00 a.m.
Uh, we have 10:00 a.m. on ours.
Okay. I know the breakfast stations are set up till 9:00, so we usually stop, so maybe we made an error on that.
Let me check the form and see what it was written as. It's 10 on the form.
Okay.
Okay. So, 10 will be when you clean up.
Yes, yes.
It'll stop at 9:00.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have that permit. I'm going to open up the next public hearing. Wolfboro Park and Rec Department to hold the Fourth of July fireworks on July 4th, rain date July 5th, 2018, from 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Brewster Academy Athletic Field.
Same event we've done for years. We do it at Brewster Field, and we, I'm trying to think, it's not, we got a new company this year. It's the one who did our winter carnival fireworks, and we're just hoping for no rain. So, we'll have it on the 4th. If it rains, we'll move to the 5th.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold the event, Fourth of July fireworks on July 4th, 2018, rain date July 5th, from 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at Brewster Academy Athletic Fields.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. You have that permit. We'll go on to the next public hearing. I'll open up that one. It's the Wolfboro Park and Rec Department to hold the Granite Kid Triathlon on July 21st, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., starting and ending at Brewster Beach. Christine?
This is our 27th Annual Granite Kid Triathlon. It ranges from 3 to 16. It's a great event. It's kind of a segue to our Granite Man Triathlon, so once they age out, they usually try to participate in that. So, it is a cute event, and we're excited to host it again. We usually fill up every year, so sign up early if you want to be in it.
Okay. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'd like to make the comment, I really enjoyed the map. From time to time, we've had some concerns about the safety of the kids, and you provided us with an excellent map, and it looks like you've got cars taken care of-
Yes.
-and I'm pleased to see that.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Do people have to get yard sale permits for that day? Or are there permits they have to get for yard sales?
I don't take permits for yard sale. No, I think you can just have a yard sale.
Okay. Yeah, because we noticed a couple of years, we drove down, and then there were yard sales going on, which kind of puts a glitch in the whole situation.
Well, hopefully, they'll know that this event is going to take place.
Yes. Well, I think they think there's a crowd there.
Yes, I think they do. Okay. Any comments for other board members? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit, Wolfboro Parks and Rec Department, to hold the Granite Kid Triathlon on July 31st, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, starting and ending at Brewster Beach. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'll open up the next public hearing. Wolfboro Park and Rec Department to hold the Granite Man Triathlon on August 18th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting and ending at Cary Beach.
Yes, so this is our 37th year doing this race. It's for the Albert Dow Scholarship Fund, and actually, this is the first year that Marjorie won't be with us, because she passed away, I believe it was in January. So, we're excited to have it in her honor. I know her family's still there. They still come every year to participate, which is really great, just to help. They're volunteering and stuff. And this is another race where we do fill up, so sign up early if you want to get a spot.
Do I have any comments from anybody in the audience? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members, anybody have any comments? Dave?
Those who don't know about Mr. Dow, he was the son of Marjorie Dow, and he died while rescuing some people on Mount Washington who had got, who were strayed, and I don't think they had the right winter equipment or anything, and he gave his, he gave his life up.
Yep.
All righty. Any other selectmen? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to, excuse me, start over again. I move that we approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor, uh, event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold the Granite State, the Granite Man Triathlon on August 18th, 2018, from 2:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., starting and ending at Cary Beach.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. I'll open up the next public hearing. The Wolfboro Park and Rec Department to hold Movies in the Park on June 29th, July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, rain date is Saturday, starting at dusk at Foss Field.
Yes, so we have four Movies in the Park this year. Time varies based on the sun, obviously. It will get a little bit later as the summer progresses. We're hoping for better weather this year. Lot of mosquitoes and a lot of rain last year, so.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
I know.
Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to hold Movies in the Park on June 29th, July 13th, and 27th, and August 10th, 2018, rain date is Saturday, starting at dusk at Foss Field.
Do I have a second? A second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. I'll open up the next public hearing. You're done.
You're done.
Next one is New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold a sketch fun footy regatta on June 2nd, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street. Please state your name for the record.
Mark Whitehead, a board member of the New Hampshire Boat Museum, responsible for the model yachting programs. Sorry, this was a little, this information was a little late coming to me. Otherwise, I would have had it taken care of sooner. This is a very, very small event. I think last year, we had maybe a dozen skippers, and these are little 12-inch sail, radio-controlled sailboats, very low-key, and just a lot of fun for the, those who participate, and those that walk down the path and enjoy it.
And there are usually a lot of people on the path who enjoy it, too.
That's true.
And you could watch them and go down and back, and, yeah. Does anybody in the audience want to make a comment to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary event permit to the New Hampshire Boat Museum to hold the Sasquatch Footy Regatta on June 2nd, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I will open up the next public hearing, and I will make a note that the date is wrong. It says on the notice that it was June 21st. It's July 21st. So, I will read the notice by, and change that date. All Saints Episcopal Church to hold the 58th Annual Summer Fair on July 21st, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 258 South Main Street. Can you state your name for the record? And tell us a little bit about it.
Yes. Okay. I'm Joanne Crowe, and I think Clint Brown is right here. We're the chairs for the fair. This is the 58th year that we're having this fair. It takes place in the church parking lot, and it's a real community fair, where lots of folks show up. Great, great event.
I think we're only going to have one large tent.
We're going to have three tents. Typically, we have four tents, one, a couple really large tents, and then one small tent, because we've cut it back a little bit this year.
Okay. Well, the application was full and complete. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment about this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, any comments? Somebody want to give me a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to All Saints Episcopal Church to hold their 58th Annual Summer Fair on July 21st, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 258 South Main Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I will open up the next public hearing, and I think it's the last public hearing. The Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold spring fundraisers on May 11th and 12th, 18th, 25th and 26th, June 2nd, 8th and 9th, 15th and 16th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 65 Pine Hill Road.
Yes. Sarah Silk, I'm representing the Hospital Community Aid Association, and I do see that there was a note from the fire department to please maintain, you know, openings for fire equipment to get down. And if you look at the insurance form, you will see that it expires, I believe it's the 29th of May. When we get a new one, we will submit that, as always, to Ann. And these are barn sale days. It's all donated goodies. You can't even imagine what goodies come in and go out. And the, all the money that's realized from this, as from the street fair, all goes for the purchase of equipment for either rehab or over at the hospital. It's all for patient care.
Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to the Hospital and Community Aid Association, Inc., to hold spring fundraisers on May 11th, 12th, 18th, 25th, 26th, June 2nd, 8th, 9th, 15th, and 16th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at 65 Pine Hill Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All righty. We're through with all those. The next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. We have the weekly manifest of April 13th and April 20th. We have notices intent to cut wood and timber, and we have current use applications. We have a raffle permit also. Do I have any selectmen who'd like to address any of them or remove any? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote?
I move we approve the issuance of a, excuse me. I move that we approve and sign the items listed on the agenda from A through D above.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All righty. We're moving on to appointments. We have a series of appointments, and I know that's why you're all here tonight. Sorry, the room's a little small, but we're going to have Performant here. That's the Children's Shakespearean Theater, and we're glad they're going to do it again this year in this facility. The trustees of the trust fund, we have an one alternate member. State your name for the record and why you're here.
My name is Barbara Lobdell, and I'm chairman of the trustees of the trust funds, and I would like to request that the selectmen name two alternates to the trustees of the trust funds, Mary O'Brien and Karen Haskell, and they are both here this evening.
Dave, do we have anything that would preclude us from doing that?
No.
Beautiful. If you want to come up, just say hi, and Mary, I think you've been on it before.
Yes, I have. I had two terms on it as elected, and now I'd like to continue with it, because it's such a good organism, such a good group, what can I tell you?
Okay. And Karen Haskell, just give us a little bit about you, and this is your first term?
It is.
Okay.
Yes. Bob Stewart asked me to serve as an alternate, and I'm on board of the Great Waters Music Festival. I'm sort of semi-retired. I live in town, and I'm happy to do this, if you'd like me to.
And thank you both for being willing to volunteer for this. We need people to be on our committees. Board members, does anybody have any questions of these two women? Okay. Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve the appointment of two alternates to the trustee of the trust funds in the name of Mary O'Brien and Karen Lawrence Haskell.
Do I have a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The next appointments are going to be to the ZBA. I am going to step down. My husband, low practice, he goes in front of it, and I have a conflict of interest, and I'm going to turn it over to Dave Senical.
Okay. The zoning board of adjustment, we need two members for one year, because this was approved to be an elected position after this year. So, we, we need two, two members. We have four candidates. Timothy Cronin, I think he's here. Luke Friedenberg, I saw Luke, I think. Suzanne Ryan, and Hank Y. Anybody wish to say anything to the board before we get involved in this? Okay.
To be clear, I am, I'm asking for the board to appoint me to a full-time voting member from an alternate. And there are current, Mike Carter has stepped down. David, you probably knew that-
I knew that.
...because you were at that meeting. So, that leaves two, two possible positions. I am the longest-serving voting member. I've served since 2008, and I believe with the loss of Mike, we're going to lose some seniority and some knowledge with him. And I think it's reasonable to, for an applicant to expect, when they come before the board, that they have a board that is knowledgeable and fully aware of how the process, not only how the process works, but that they're aware of the state laws and the laws relevant to ZBA. It's probably one of the harder boards to serve on, and in that, that we have to go by the criteria, and when a board, when a board votes to say no, it's very difficult to look at an applicant in the face and say, "The board unfortunately has to deny your request, because you don't meet all of the criteria." And I would just say that I feel that I bring a balance to the board. I have served with many different memberships, many different chairmen. I have served as vice chairman. My attendance is reasonably good, at 95 percent, and so I'm asking for your vote and your support to be returned to a full voting member. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Cronin. I'm currently an alternate on the zoning board of adjustment for about a year now. I have 21 years' experience on the zoning board of appeals as an elected person in Newtown, Connecticut, coming up here, continuing to volunteer and enjoy doing it. I'd like to be a permanent member.
Hi, I'm Hank Y. I've been a summer resident since 1968, retired here in 1998, and I find this ZBA is a very pleasant way to give back to town that's been so great to myself, my family, and the next generations, who are all moving here. I'd like to join and fill it out until we get to the elected position.
Board, hi, Luke Friedenberg. I'd like to continue serving the town in some way, and I thought that bringing a new perspective, and someone who owns a business in town and who's of the next generation might be a good, a good avenue and a good voice, so I'd be, I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
We need, we need two members. Yes.
Just, just to clarify, there's just the two regular member positions available. There's no alternates to be appointed this evening, because Town Council advised that, you know, the alternates have to wait until the elected board is in place. So, you're just making the, the two, two-
Permanent.[1724.33]
So you're just making the two, two one-year appointments this evening.
Anybody that's an alternate now can continue as an alternate? Because we will need some alternates.
Not if their term is expiring.
Okay. Do we have any such situations, David? Do you know?
Well, I'm just looking here. Suzanne Ryan will continue till 2020 as an alternate, and Tim Cronin continues as an alternate to 2019.
So Suzanne and Tim are alternates now?
Right.
Okay.
And just so I can get it clear, so they're alternates now, and in the case of Mr. Cronin, he would continue to be an alternate until 19, and Ms. Ryan would be an alternate until 2020?
Correct.
Assuming, assuming nothing changed.
Yep, then they would have to run for the elected positions.
Understood, thank you.
And then the elected ZBA picks their alternates.
Okay. Hey, we got four applicants. I think probably ought to bring each name, or somebody make a motion to move somebody to a permanent position at this point.
I'll move Luke Freidenberg to be a permanent member of the ZBA.
I'll second that for purposes of discussion. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David? Okay. So that's one. Somebody else want to make a motion for another one?
I'll move that Suzanne Ryan be nominated based on her experience.
A second? Okay, there's no second. Somebody want to make a motion on one other one then, please? Or I will. I'll make a motion to Timothy Cronin. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me stop and think. Okay. Well, if you guys wanted, I'll vote yes then.
Okay. So Luke and Tim, if you get sworn in with Pat Waterman, and the others will continue?
Suzanne will continue as a...
Suzanne will continue as an alternate?
An alternate.
And Hank Why? Thank you for your service, Hank.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, it's all yours.
Thanks for doing that, Dave. Okay, next one, Conservation Commission. We have three members for three years, and we need two alternate members. We have Jeff Marshon, Arthur Scowler, no.
Swolko.
Swolko, and Lorraine Clark.
Lenore.
Lenore.
Lenore. I'm doing well once I got back here. Any of those people here?
And just for clarity, are these, are these folks bidding for permanent positions or alternates?
They have been permanent, you know, ongoing members, and their terms expire in 2018, so all three of them are seeking reappointment.
And then we had, we received from Dave, we had Warren Muir and Bob Piermont, who had also requested being put on the Conservation Commission.
I'll make a motion that we approve the three, Jeff, Arthur, and Lenore, to continue. And the other two names, we could, we'll do those separately as alternates?
Yeah, let's take, do the three. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Alrighty. Now we have, need two alternates, Warren Muir and Bob Piermont. I'll make a motion to appoint them as alternate members. I don't think either one of those are here. Oh, you're here. Come on up.
I know you are.
Muir.
Yes.
And Muir's here, okay, sorry.
Both here.
Uh-huh.
It's not Piermont, it's Pierpont with a P.
Pierpont, okay.
I'm retired Navy Senior Chief Petty Officer over 20 years. I was also a Navy diver, and I served on seven ships, three of them nuclear submarines. I'm very familiar with the water, somewhat. I want to do, this is my new town, I've been living here for about six years permanently. I'm from North Haven, Connecticut, and I just want to participate in something in this town to make it worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Warren Muir. I've been a summer resident since 1950. Our family built a home on Winter Harbor in 1953. My father split the property, retired here until he recently died, and in 1988, I became the owner of the, of the family cottage. I've spent 42 years professionally dealing with environmental issues. I'm a scientist, doing the science and environmental issues in Washington, retiring from the National Academy of Sciences as an executive director over the environmental areas of the academy. And I've been living here full-time since I retired in 2013. I'd be happy to serve. I care about the town, I care about the environment, and I'd be happy to, to serve.
Thank you for being, both of you willing to volunteer. It's important for our town government to have people to fill these positions, and we appreciate it. So I made that motion. Did I have a second to those two alternates?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? I think it might be better for you to do the next one, Dave.
What's that?
The next one on the Lakes Region Planning Commission. I don't think I have a conflict of interest, but probably you should do that one.
The next one is the Lakes Region Planning Commission. We need one member for four years, and we have Roger Murray III, who has graciously done this for us for many years. I would make a motion that we reappoint him to Lakes Region Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Do you want to vote yes?
I'm going to abstain. Can't get myself out of that one. All right. The next one is the Agricultural Commission. We need three members for three years, and we're looking for two alternate members for three years. We have Macy Gothhardt, Wendy Rogers, and David Strout. Any of them here tonight? I don't think so.
These are incumbents.
Oh, we do. Come on up.
I'm Macy Gothhardt. I'm applying for a membership on the Ag Commission. I'm a retired middle school science teacher. I've had a lifelong interest in nature, animals particularly. I eat, as do my animals and pets, and I'm interested in having sustainable local sources. I think it's a good way to serve the town, and I hope I will be selected to be a member of the Ag Commission. Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering. Can I have a motion for the three, three-year membership?
So move.
Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we need two alternate, and Matthew Platch, you said you would be interested in the agricultural?
If you need me? Sure.
I would think that with what you have on your land, would you be willing to do that?
I would.
Okay. I'll nominate Matthew Platch to be an alternate to the Agricultural Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next committee is the Economic Development Committee. We need three members for three years, we need one member for two years, and we need one alternate member for three years. And I would like to recommend that we do Craig Emel, Denise Roy Palmer, and William Peterson. William Peterson has been an alternate. He has an extensive background, and you want to come up and kind of explain to the board your wonderful background?
I wear a collar full-time these days, but prior to that, I spent 30 years in hospitality, tourism, management, and higher education. I'm the former dean of the Hospitality School at Southern New Hampshire University. I was on the State Tourism Advisory Commission for two terms, appointed by a Democratic and Republican governor, and served as chair of that commission for one term. Happy to serve. I've been serving as an alternate this year.
Thank you.
Is Dave Chappelle here?
Is Dave here? So I made that motion.
He's, he's traveling. He sent an email. He's out on the West Coast right now.
So I made a motion with those three. Did I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have one member for two years, and Kathy Tetro is serving now, and I think would like to serve for another two years. You want to come on up and give a little background?
Hi, my name is Kathy Tetro. I work at Lakes Region Technology Center. It's my first year working here, but I've been a 20-year resident of Wolfboro. I bring to the table a vast background in education. I've been a school administrator in my previous job, and I would really like to bring something back to the town that now I can serve on this board with you and help grow the economic development of Wolfboro. I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion? I'll make the motion that we appoint Kathy Tetro to a two-year term on the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Now we have one alternate for three years, and I think Dave Chappelle has been on the committee?
No.
No, he's not, okay.
He's a new person to town who worked for Amazon Web Services before.
Okay, he's not the one I was thinking of. So we have Kathy Barnard and Dave Chappelle, so does...
I'll move that we appoint Dave Chappelle to the alternate for three years.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Mill Foil Committee, we need one member for two years, and we have Jim McDeWitt. Is he here?
Devitt.
Devitt? Okay.
I think he may, a few, a few people sent me notes here. He said he would not be able to attend.
If we can appoint him.
They're doing a PNS for the sale of their house in Massachusetts this evening.
Can I have a motion?
I move we appoint Jim McDevitt to the Mill Foil Committee for two years.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Wolfboro Energy Committee, we need two members for three years and one member for two years, and we have a Jeff Willett. Is Jeff here? Come on up, Jeff.
Hi, Jeff Willett. I've been on the Energy Committee for, I don't know, a couple of years, so, and willing to continue to serve.
Fantastic.
What's that?
Fantastic.
So we had a late applicant today.
Oh, we did?
Kevin Sangenbacher, if I'm pronouncing that right, who said he would be interested in the Energy Committee.
Is Kevin here?
He's going to be on the committee here in a minute.
I think so, because we need two.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jeff Willett and Kevin...
For three-year terms.
Sangenbacher.
That guy.
I'll give her the spelling.
The three-year terms.
Do I have a second?
Three-year terms.
A three-year term, yes.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Everybody is going to need to go and be sworn in by Pat Waterman, just as another reminder. Pathway Committee, we need three members for three years and two members for two years, and we received nobody.
Is it appropriate to ask anyone in the audience if they want to step up and say yes or no?
They can, they can apply.
Yeah.
They can send us a note.
Wendy? Can we pull anybody out of the office?
It's a lot of heads, it's a lot of heads going down like this.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Yes, we are, we would love to have another person on the Energy Committee. Okay, look at that.
What have we got? Tim Cronin.
Tim Cronin. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Tim Cronin to a three-year membership on the Wolfboro Energy Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's see if we can find anybody in the audience for the Pathway Committee. Anybody interested in the Pathways? We've had, that's been a pretty active committee. The gentlemen who have been involved have kind of, are spending more of their time out of town during the winter, so that's a committee we're going to need to try to get back up and going. Our pathways through this community are very important, and we have the ones in Sewell Woods. You can see the bike trails throughout town, so if you know of anybody who you think would be good to be on that committee, feel free to give me the name, and I'll make a telephone call and see if we can find some people to be on that committee. The next one is the Information System Advisory Committee. We need one member for three years. Nobody signed up, but I was wondering, Matthew, whether you'd be interested in...
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. In fact, I talked to Peter earlier today, so...
Beautiful.
I'd be happy to do it, so...
Thank you.
I do a lot of work, I actually do a lot of work with the Information Technology Services Department of the City of Los Angeles.
Beautiful.
They're one of my big clients, so...
You're in. You're in. You won a position right now.
You're a cinch.
Thank you for coming and volunteering.
I don't know a lot about computers, but I can, I come at it from a legal perspective.
You could be out.
Yeah, thank you.
And you might enjoy it.
I'll make a motion to nominate Matthew Platch for a three-year terms, term on the system, Information System Advisory Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fisherville Committee, four members for one year, and again, we have, nobody signed up, myself and Brad Harriman are the two from the Board of Selectmen, but Fisherville has some issues. One is weather. We've had it all set to go, and we lose the ice, or don't have the ice, or we don't have snow. But it's something, it's part of when we did, the Economic Development Committee did the Business Retention and Expansion Survey, one of the goals was to have more events in town, and this is one we're trying to get going. So if anybody's interested in, in Fisherville and helping out, again, give me your name or give me somebody's name, and I'll be more than willing to make that contact. The next one is the Heritage Commission. We need two members for three years, we need one member for one year, we need one alternate member for three years. We have Pat Hutter, Ann Blodgett, Gene Danoo, and he'd like to be an alternate. And I think we have Ann Blodgett here. You want to say a few words?
My name's Ann Blodgett. I beat Mr. Muir. I've got 67 summers here. So, anyway, I...
Thank you.
I wasn't asking for it. Anyway, I, the Heritage Commission has just begun its work, and we have a lot to do under the leadership of Maggie Steer, so I would like to continue to support her in that effort.
Thank you. Gene's not here either. Okay, board members, can I have a motion?
I'll move that we appoint Pat Hutter and Ann Blodgett to the Heritage Commission for three years.
Three-year terms, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And we can have a motion for one alternate member for three years?
So move.
And that's Gene Danoo. Do I have a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Which leads us, leaves us one member for one year. Again, if somebody's interested in the Heritage Commission, let us know, and we will see if we can get them appointed. Let me get this all out of the way. Okay, next item, next item on the agenda is the monthly business, monthly budget expenditure and revenue report. Peter?
Good evening. Pete Chamberlain, Finance Director. I'll have a copy of my report. This being a third of, a quarter of the way through the year, things should rule of thumb be around 25 percent. You'll see that overall, the, overall expenditure data is around 26, with the general fund being at 24, the water at 27, the electric fund at 24 percent, the sewer fund at 43, and power well at around 35 percent. Keeping in mind, some of those higher numbers are due to the fact that we have large debt service payments in January of each year. Are there any questions?
I just would make a comment. It seems like we're running high in electricity and fuel, and we have all the issues with the number of plowing and overtime in public works. Do you think by the next time...
works. Do you think by the next time, maybe we could have some kind of report on how those department heads may adjust to deal with those issues?
Sure. Yeah, I'm sure that Dave Ford is planning on putting something together. He asked me, he basically said that he wanted to wait until winter was over and before he developed the bad news. And unfortunately, winter's not over yet.
Yes, we learned that on Monday and Tuesday. But I think it would be nice for us to see, because we also have some electric numbers and fuel that are high in some of the buildings to see how they're going to do that.
Yes, correct. In this building.
And thank you for taking care of that revenue issue.
Yeah, the revenue. I had some pointers got mixed up, and then I did a revision by printing a report off the system. And then I got that done and sent it out to you, and five minutes later, the auditor sent me all of the enterprise fund data from the audit for last year. So, I...
Bless their heart.
Yeah, I know. And then I updated it again. So...
Well, thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem.
Any members of the Board of Selectmen would like to make any comment about the...
Just the revenues are keeping pace with everything pretty well, which is nice to see.
Yes, it is. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Activity Positive Pay Program. And I guess you and our treasurer are here to address this.
Sure. A short while ago, we had an incident where we had a check for approximately $7,800 was sent to Morton Salt in Illinois at their correct address, and somewhere along the way, it got, somebody absconded with it, altered it to not say Morton Salt anymore, and deposited over their iPhone into a bank in Houston, a credit, online credit union in Houston. So, John was here that day, so he immediately went to the police department and reported it. I, the next, I came in the next day. I reported it to the, our insurance carrier just to see how much coverage we had. We were covered for theft with the exception of about $1,000. I would talk to the detective over PD, Shane Emerson. He said he's the, they've got the U.S. Postal Inspector and the FBI are chasing this person down. And also, John signed an affidavit yesterday, and Citizens Bank will be going about getting our money back from us from the Houston bank. So, I have a pretty good chance we're going to be made whole in this particular case. But I know over the last couple of years, we've been considering signing up for this program called Positive Pay, Positive Pay, which essentially, we, every week, we would do an electronic copy of sorts of the Accounts Payable Check Register and send it to the bank. And when somebody presented a check for, to Citizens Bank to be reimbursed, they would check against that list to make sure that the name was the same, essentially. The cost of this is on a per piece basis. That was, I think it was a 650 pieces average. So, it'd be a little bit lower some months, maybe a little bit higher some other months. It would apply only to accounts payable. We only have about 10 people that get their paychecks via check anymore. Most everybody's on direct deposit. So, I did check also that with our computer software company, and there's going to be a small charge to change your report so that we can produce this directly out of our Accounts Payable system.
Yeah, that was one of my questions, on how you were going to get that.
Yeah, I had talked to them. They said they didn't, it was, you know, it's like six fields that they need to produce, check number, date, name, a few things like that. They didn't think that was going to be too complicated. So...
If you, with that and what the charge is on the estimate, we're looking at about $3,000.
About that, yeah. I'll, yeah, I'll get that out of my budgets to...
Oh, if you're going to step right up and find it.
Yeah. Well, you know, really, after giving it some more consideration, it makes some sense. If only from a convenience of, you know, a more hassle-free existence to be able to do it.
Right. And since we just had an incident. Any other board members want to make any comments about this?
Yeah, I have a, I'm sorry, I just don't understand the process. So, you're going, you take the Accounts Payable ledger, and you send it to the bank?
Yeah.
When someone walks into the bank with a check, they verify it against our ledger?
Correct.
Okay.
And if there's any difference...
And they charge us a fee, whatever that fee is in here?
Yeah.
To do that?
If they, if there's something wrong, they notify us.
If someone were to fraudulently deposit a check, what's our recourse?
Fraud...
Forget about Positive Pay.
Okay.
If someone just takes it, creates a check...
We're covered for, we're covered for all but $1,000 of each incident.
And so, the fee that we're going to pay is going to be how much per year?
I think there was two, a couple, $35 a month.
It's $233 and 30 cents per month based on that 600...
50 checks a month.
So, that's a couple thousand bucks.
Yeah, a couple thousand bucks.
And so, and so, we've done the math, and I'm sure you have, we've done the math that
says we're spending a couple thousand dollars to offset a potential loss of...
I don't know.
All depending on if it ever happens again, I guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Part of the problem, too, is if you have, if you have too many of those incidents, if they should happen, our insurance rates will go up, too. So...
Yep. And if I may, you know, there are just so many hackers and scammers out there now that, you know, the incidence of this kind of thing might, might increase.
You know, we, we can, they gave us a copy of the check, and it was supposed to be Morton Salt, and it's to another person, and they...
It's a good-looking check, too.
Yeah, and they were able to take a picture of it, and in it goes, and, you know, and so, and this is the recommendation of you. And John, you're in favor of us doing this?
Absolutely. This is an increasing problem.
Okay. Thank you, John. They can't hear you at home if you don't come to the mic.
Excuse me. It's an increasing problem, because more and more people have their phones, can take pictures, front and back, and do the deposit electronically. And it is an increasing problem, I've been told. By the way, this, I think the Governor Wentworth Regional School District uses this system, and many schools are using this system.
Board members, anybody else have any comments, questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve, approve activating the pay, Positive Pay Program offered by Citizens Bank, the cost of which will be borne by the Finance Department.
And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody in poll? And we have one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Winnipesaukee Bell Commercial Vehicle Landing Permit. Is there anybody here? Oh, beautiful.
Hi, my name's Tom Wood. I represent the Wolfboro Inn and the Winnipesaukee Bell. I'm one of the captains on the boat. Our application is the same as it's been in years past. We don't see any change. It's the number of landings, and our sign permit will be for the, exactly the same sign as we've had before in years past. And look forward to another season.
As soon as the ice...
Attracting a lot of people to the Bell.
We're still going to get rid of some of that ice out there. It's not working.
Okay. Board members, anybody have any questions for Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Kevin.
If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve and sign the commercial vessel landing permit for the Winnipesaukee Bell for the 2018 season.
And I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. You're all set. Have a good season.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the grant agreement with New Hampshire DES for the Household Hazardous Waste Program. And the grant is for $2,675.
I'm Sarah Silk. I am the site coordinator for LRH HPS. For the last 29 years, I've been doing hazardous waste for Wolfboro and Alton. This is our fiscal year grant for Department Environmental Services. We applied for it. It will cover from July of 2018 through June 30 of 2019. The $2,675 is based on permanent population. Unfortunately, they do not count our influx of summer people. The pamphlet that I passed out to you, I know three of you have seen it before, but I don't think Paul O'Brien has. That is our new flyer for household hazardous waste. We do household hazardous waste the third Saturday of the month, starting the month of May, all the way through the month of October, rain or shine. Shine is always a lot more fun. We do medicine collections in June and August here. We go down to Alton the second Saturday of July, also the second Saturday of September, where we do medications there as well. We have enjoyed great support from the police departments in both our communities. Thank you. And we also, this year, did a pilot program the third Saturday of February for a midwinter medicine collection by request of the local pharmacies, because they had so many inquiries regarding the midwinter disposal. This is just one tool that we have in our community. We also have DEA drug drop-offs the last Saturday of April and October at the Police Department. They also have a small drop box inside the lobby as well, where you can drop off medications. And we had such a good response. In February, we collected 42 gallons of medications, which is as much or more than eight out of our last 12 collections specifically for medications. So, we are definitely going to do it again next year. So, what I need from you people tonight is to have a motion to accept this grant and to have our town manager sign it, and then the, Pat Waterman will affirm from the minutes that this has happened and that you are all authorized to do it, and then I'll be good to go. An awful lot of paperwork for not very much money, but every little bit counts.
Better than nothing. Okay. Any member of the board have any questions? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve accepting household hazardous waste collection grant funds, enter in a grant contract with the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, further to authorize the town manager to execute any documents which may be necessary for this grant agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We'll sign your grant application, or Dave Owen will.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Proposed voluntary lot merger of the former McBride parcel with the Public Safety Building parcel. Mr. Owen, or...
Yes, as I think the board knows, we have a steering group consisting of the two chiefs, police and fire chief, and the planning director, and Mr. Senical from the Board of Selectmen, and myself, that have been working with the architects, LaValle, Bren, Sanger architects on the space needs assessment and existing conditions assessment for the public safety building. And in order to enable them to consider the possible use of the lot that was acquired by the town six years ago, that we refer to as the Bun McBride parcel, which is sort of in between the library and the public safety building, we're asking that the board approve an application for a voluntary lot merger application. This would go to the planning board, and they would, would be up to the planning board to approve it. So, you're, we're just asking you to sign the application so it can go to the planning board. This will enable the architects to consider using some or a portion of that parcel for the public safety building or the site plan for the public safety building as they move forward.
Any member of the board have any questions or comments?
Oh, and I should note, this is with the express understanding that that lot will be used by the library during their project.
Sure.
As a staging area, construction staging area.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve and sign the application for a voluntary lot merger for the Public Safety Building parcel and the former McBride parcel.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, dear.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is parking space in front of Kate Park. Do you want to lead into this, or you want me to just take it, Mr. Owen?
I thought Peter Colecart would be here.
See him here.
He's the one who requested to be on the agenda.
I have a comment.
Okay, let me, I'll get over it. What we have here is a request from the owner of the Downtown Grill. He is wishing that we add two additional striped parking spaces to be 15-minute parking only along the curb line in front of Kate Park, which is right now, there is no parking in that area. It's kind of where it starts where the Santa Claus Hut is and heads up to the end of the park. Dave?
Being in the butter of this for 35 years, that's the only place in town that tour buses can land. It'll accommodate two of them end to end. They, my idea that over by, over by Bay, whatever it is, where the, where the... Park is behind the meat market there. We want, I wanted the town to have that, but, but that's now a financial thing. So, the only place we have for tour buses to park is in front of Kate Park, and I would feel strongly that it would be a bad idea to not allow them to park there. And they come pretty regularly. They don't come all the time, but they're pretty much there from the spring till about Thanksgiving.
Dave Senical?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with two spaces if they start by the old Hallmark store, you know, by that crosswalk. Put two spaces, one, two. Part of the reason we don't have parking there is so we can see the lake through the park. Well, the trees are so big now, we can't hardly see through them anyway. So, if it was down on that end, if there were two more spaces, if they could just two more spaces downtown, that would make sense. But I think if they, if the logic is that they be down closer to that crosswalk, one, two, I would not be objectionable to that. I don't think we should stop striping that whole thing in front of the park. Collection of spaces downtown can make a difference.
Paul?
If those two spaces, and I don't know the answer, I just asked the question, if those two spaces are in close proximity to a crosswalk, maybe we need to get some advice about, you know, a child walking out between two parked cars on a legitimate crosswalk into what is uphill and moving traffic. So, I'd be, you know, I would, I'd just like to get a little more coaching on that point. I think, I think, I think it's a good idea to think about more parking spaces if that's a legitimate request, but tucking them in close to crosswalks, I just have, I just got a little larger about that.
Well, that was a suggestion that was going to happen as well, that we postpone it until we can get some information from the town planner and the, and the police chief.
Well, I'd like to make a comment on this. In 1996, we redid the docks and the dockside area. And before the bu, the buses, the tour buses would come in, and they would drop the tourists off there. Part of that changing of the docks was to move this area and make it for buses. And it was in agreement with the Mount Washington, who was upset that they couldn't drive down by the town docks. It also is a place where people making deliveries can pull off and do it closer to the downtown. So, I'm with Dave Bowers. I don't think we should start putting parking spaces. I'm with you. We need light of sight for kids, for pedestrians. We know how people walk out, and that would make one of those parking spaces that is dangerous. So, my feeling is we're better off to leave well enough alone. I do notice from time to time, somebody will park there and run into the post office and come back out. But I think that we, there is a real reason why we left that space, and that was for our tour buses. Tourism is a very important part of our industry here of tourism, and I, and I would be concerned of the crosswalks.
Probably. We've been along either. Probably we've been alone either.
So are we comfortable leaving it alone, or do we want to revisit?
I'll make a motion that we reject this proposal.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post. Alrighty, that took care of that. Okay, old business. I have a couple of old business. I want to let people know that our new town manager, Becky Marrow, met with all the selectmen over Thursday and Friday of last week. She met with Dave Owen, went to a department heads meeting, saw how we put an agenda together. She met and had lunch, I believe, with Dave Owen in the superintendent of schools. Dave Bowers gave her a historical tour of the town, and Dave Owen took her to see some of our town facilities. So she has gotten a sense of who we are. I'd also like to let people know that the dockside restroom project that we were hoping to get done before the summer, just there wasn't enough time to pull that off, and the project is now scheduled for after Labor Day. Does anybody else have any old business? Does anybody have any?
Just comment that I think that everybody's going to like Becky. We spent a lot of time with her. She's very, very enthusiastic. She's a very interesting lady. She has a Juris Deed Law degree and can practice law in Vermont and New Hampshire, if I remember correctly. Her family, she's an old time New Hampshire person. Her grandfather had a 500-acre farm or something like that in Lancaster. As town manager of one of the towns, she was interested in the heavy equipment, so she took a heavy equipment course and knows how to run a back loader and a roller. She's very, very much interested and very, very enthusiastic, and I think we made a good choice.
Thank you, David. Any other business? Hearing none, Mr. Owen, town manager's report?
Yes, I had a few things I wanted to report out. One, I wanted to make the board aware that the finance director and I have prepared an advertisement here, a help wanted ad basically, for our new finance director. And we reviewed this with Becky Marrow when she was here last week, and she's on board with it. And so unless there's any objection or any revisions or anything, we're planning on advertising this position with the idea of getting the applications in before I leave at the end of next month. So all, all the applications for the finance director position will be here when Becky gets here, and then she can do the interviews and decide, you know, who she wants.
Do you have an idea where you're going to post this ad?
Yes, well, it'll probably go in the union leader, the local paper, plus we'll put it on the New Hampshire Municipal Association website, and also the, what's the finance group? It's the, did Peter leave me? There's, there's an association for finance people also. I can't think of the name of it right off, but we'll put it out to them also.
Any social media sites?
Wasn't planning on it, but we could. I think most municipal employees look to places like the New Hampshire Municipal Association website.
Okay, I've kind of looked it over. I'd like to have some time to read it. Board members, are we agree that we will get back to Mr. Owen with any comments? When do you want to send this out?
Well, probably next week or sometime soon.
Okay, by the end of this week, anybody who has any comments will get ahold of you.
Great.
Okay, also, just for your information, the town's Economic Development Committee adopted a new mission statement at their meeting yesterday. It's quite a bit more succinct than their old mission statement, and I just wanted the board to be aware of this. I believe we've already got it up on the, on the EDC's webpage.
And I'll make a comment that the EDC took a while to work this out. We had many additions and making sure that we had it say exactly what they wanted in this, we passed last meeting, guess this Tuesday, and I think that is a good mission statement.
There will be a townwide cleanup day on May 5th. It's being sponsored by Huggins Hospital.
That's cool.
And Gala, Global Action Local, Global Awareness Local Action is coordinating the event here in Wolfboro. And of course, our solid waste division is assisting by providing them the plastic bags and picking up the bags after the cleanup event. So again, that's May 5th. There was a bid opening on Monday for the new fire engine, which was, is in the capital improvement plan. I think we're carrying a budget of $455,000 in the capital improvement plan for it, and so the bids are being evaluated at this point.
Do you know whether the bids came in close to the?
I gather some are below it and some are above that amount, yes. The Public Works Department reports that the, and I see Dave Ford here, he might be able to report on this directly, the Center Street project is going to be mobilizing next week. The signage is going to go up tomorrow, I believe. And so that's moving forward. Also, the, the work down at the Foss Field Pavilion is, is going on. Do you want to give a little update while you're here, Dave?
Yeah, the Center Street project, we put a notice out, they're mobilizing. We'll be seeing the de-watering equipment coming in, and we hope to start digging next week. So watch out for the detour signs, and once we're digging on Center Street, we will be having one-lane traffic constriction, so we're going to be asking for people to look to go around, especially big trucks coming from the north going south. We're looking to detour trot track out to Beach Pond Road, up on 09, Wombach, and it'd just be easier to get around there. If you're a smaller vehicle, you can get up 1098 or Bay Street and around, and I'm sure all the locals will figure that out real quickly. The Foss Field building is, yeah, now the ground is thawed. We're putting in underground electric, started today, fishing up the inside, and we're looking to have that ready by the end of May, so that's going along pretty well. We've actually saved quite a bit of money with the town crews doing a lot of the work, which is now allowing us to do some extras, really make it look nicer. We're excited about that. What else do we have on the list? The dockside project, we, the ramps are, everything's done there, we just need to do some cleanup.
Mm-hmm.
And we got the paving, it's going to be coming in, it's going to be this week because of the snow, it's delayed till next week. And we're going to start right on the dock repairs. We signed contracts with the engineer, and we're working with the contractor on those emergency repairs, which we hope to start within the next couple of weeks, so things are going along well. Unfortunately, like you did announce, I did, probably was overly optimistic in trying to line up my contractors for spring. Even if I had them all lined up, we would have had this conflict with the Smith River canoe race in May, the fisherman in April. So really, it's going to work better in the fall, so we can get it all, the outside work done, and get it buttoned up, and then finish it over the winter when there's really little, little traffic down there. So that should work out better in the long run.
I have just one question about the Center Street construction. Are we going to have two lanes during the summer? I know the project got pushed off, and so I don't know whether that is still possible.
Yep. From July 1st through, through Labor Day, we will not have the two, one-lane constriction. So we're limited under that due to the, you know, the heavy traffic flow. We will still be working on the edges, so there could be small delays, but there won't be any major detours at that time. We are trying to work on Pine Street, so we'll be closing Pine Street down, but that will always be open to the businesses and residents there, but it won't be used as a cut-through when we're doing the waterline project. So we're trying to line that up, so when we're done with Center Street, we'll be, we're going to finish it. Anyone in the neighborhood, it's going to be a rough year this year, but again, I think we'll all be happy.
We'll do fine.
Yeah. And, and we, are we going to tell people how back ways maybe to get into Harvest Market and stuff?
During construction, we'll always have traffic control people out there, and we'll have the signs, we're going up talking about the main traffic, and all businesses will remain open, so there will be a way to get to the businesses. So if the detours or for through traffic to get around, we will be able to get in, it'll just be slow.
Okay. Thank you, David.
And we'll try, we'll get more information coming out as well. We're going to try to get those updates weekly out to the people on the mailing list, and we'll try to get updates to the paper also.
And these are also posted on the town website?
They should be. This one, we have a big mailing list, so they're going directly, and then we'll post them on the website too.
Well, I just so the public who are listening today know that they can go to the town website to get the same kind of information.
I'll have to check, make sure tomorrow it was posted.
Okay. Starting tomorrow, it'll be posted.
David, the Wolfboro Falls Post Office, last time I checked, is not up to date on this at all because their orders come out of the postal system, so you might want to let the US Post Office, or its headquartered, know what's happening in Center Street.
Okay.
It's just the Wolfboro Falls up.
I'll talk to the postmaster, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's Julie. They said, well, we don't know what's happening, and I said, well, you know, call the town, but it's not a town project, mainly, you know.
Yeah, well, Mr. Manager, yes, they should talk to me.
Talk to them and out.
Yeah, I'm the person, so I'll, I'll reach out to the post office, make sure they know what's going on.
You were saying Wolfboro Falls, Dave?
Wolfboro Falls, yeah.
Bring a flyer.
Like you say, everyone, all businesses will remain open, so we'll get people in and out, just might be a little slow.
Thank you. Dave Owen, anything else is that?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
I'll start down there with Mr. O'Brien. Do you have any committee reports?
I do. I, I chair now the Energy Master Plan Committee. We had our kickoff meeting the other day, well-attended. We can always use more, so wherever the people out there are. Our town planner is doing a good job collecting data and parking it out on a, on a cloud drive so that we can look at information about our town, so I think that was good. Last evening, I attended the planning board on behalf of Mr. Harriman. The planning board is, had a community forum, or had a forum last evening to talk about architectural design issues. It was kind of a first start. More to be done, and clearly, this should be of interest to business owners and commercial folks to actively participate in this. This is an important thing. And yes, I did have time to spend with Becky, although it's not a committee report, and I, I enjoyed the time we spent together. It was wonderful.
Maybe we can give them a little better idea where the, the conversation was last night, and it was in guidelines or standards, architectural standards, and there was the talk about whether it's guideline or it's a fixed standard, and that's what we were trying to work out.
There's a couple of moving parts, as you know, and not being former planning board, I mean, there's some moving parts in this. One is, what we currently have for commercial developers is guidelines. They're not, they're voluntary guidelines. And so there is a, there is a conversation, says, should those become standards? And so that's one piece. And then the second is, well, what should our town have from a look and feel point of view? What should the look and feel of commercial properties be like? So there's a, there's a couple of moving parts there, and I think, I, I think it's going to be, you know, it's going to create some animation, but I think that's good. We'll get some, hopefully, we'll get something good out of it.
Yeah, and as many people in the public who'd like to come and get their input, that's, I think, what this is, we're trying to get, is to get a feel of the full community. Anything else?
I'm all set, thank you.
Dave?
I also went to the planning board meeting last night. I also spent most of one morning with Becky. I will agree with David and everybody else, I think she's going to be a good fit for us. That's all I know.
As you could tell, I went to the architectural forum from the planning board last night. Went to the EDC, and we worked on that mission statement, and looked at a work plan and had some conversations about what the role of the EDC should be. I went to the Chamber Executive Board meeting, and tonight, before I came here, Mr. Owen and I were at the annual member mingle of the chamber. I was at the Emergency Operation Plan Committee meeting, and I think you were with me, weren't you, Dave? And I have been working on the Facilities Committee of the Master Plan. We have gone and done a number of the facilities. Before we make any recommendations, we will go see all the facilities in town, and then we will try to put together our chapter and our recommendations.
Dave?
I've been interfacing with the library. I forgot to mention that our new town manager is going to Scotland on a genealogy tour in several weeks, which is impressive, while, so she won't be around for a while. I'm also, starting with something I did for the Granite State News, I'm going over every road in New Hampshire, in Wolfboro, you know, like Janus Road and Cowper Road, and some of the things that people don't get to, and taking notes on them, taking a secretary Larissa with me for our Granite State News feature, and maybe when all done at the town hall, put it on the website, somebody coming to Wolfboro would probably be able to learn about all these obscure, all these obscure roads and whatever, but I know that North Wolfboro, I see Suzanne here, doesn't want to have tour buses on Stoddard Road, but anyway, there's a, there are a lot, very lot of, very lot of interesting byways the town has, and it's nice to explore them, something that I haven't been on for a number of years.
Yeah, and I agree with the other members of the board. I'm, I'm excited to have Becky come. I think she will bring a lot of energy and knowledge to the job, but I'm going to be sorry to see Dave go. But I want to announce again that on May 30th, from 4:00 to 6:00 here at the Grade Hall, we're going to have a reception, so anybody in the audience who'd like to say goodbye to Dave and thank him for his years of service here, you'll have that opportunity then.
If you want to slice a piece of it, we'll probably have that too.
Okay, do I have any questions from the press? This is public input, limited to three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes in all. Do I have anybody in the audience who would like to give us any public input?
Say something?
Sure, absolutely. Just say your name so people.
I'm Matthew Platch. The president of Performant asked me to say a few words, and thank you for letting us use this room. It may have been disruptive today a little bit. I know we started building the set today. I think by the time you have your next meeting, it'll look a lot different in here. It's going to be turned into kind of a Western town. That's the town jail. That's Baptista's house over there. So we really do appreciate it.
What, you're on television, want to give us the times and when it's going to take place?
So when is it? It's, the show is Taming of the Shrew, and it's the Children's Shakespeare Theater is putting it on. The first show is May 3rd, I think, so it's, which is a Thursday, and that's a matinee. And then on the 4th and 5th, there are evening shows, Friday and Saturday, and then Sunday, there's another matinee. They've been rehearsing now for well over a month, and we're getting down to the wire. Dress rehearsals, I think, start next week, is that correct? And so, and the music is being composed by two alumni of the program, so.
I, I've come to many of them, and I really enjoy them, and it's something that if you're interested in seeing some young performers, performers doing a great job.
Oh, yeah.
You need to come to it, and you can learn a bit about Shakespeare.
And so tickets are on sale at Black's, I believe, and they're also being sold online. You can, you can go to the Performant website now.
What's the address?
What's, is it the website or the Facebook page, or both?
www dot performancestagecompany dot org.
You can also access it on the town website.
Town website.
Under community links on the.
Can you?
There's no good reason not to be able to buy a ticket.
That's right.
And tickets are going fast, because I think this is the first year we've sold them online.
Okay.
And we're getting a lot of, a lot of early sales now, so.
So we need to pay attention if we want to get here to get those tickets early.
Madam Chairman, if I could, the other day, there was a, in quotes, men's breakfast. was a, in quotes, men's breakfast and the Performant team came together and passed out just a few lines to some of the folks who were at the, at the breakfast to actually read Shakespeare and our, one of our beloved police officers, our chief of police was a, was a performer. It's nice to know that we'll have other people performing at the play.
Yeah. And there's a new director this year too, who's, she's just brought this, a lot of new energy to the program. So you're gonna see some neat stuff this year when you come.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I'd like to address the board. Last year, when the board moved me to an alternate position on the ZBA, I thought I should give it a try. I should stick with it and see how I liked it. But basically, an alternate cannot vote on applications. You do all the sled dog work, but you're very ineffective in the end of deciding what becomes of an application. This board, the ZBA, is not a board that is learn as you go. I have had close to 50 years' experience in land use. I came to the ZBA with a good planning background. Your action tonight left the board, the ZBA board, with two members with one year experience each, one member with four years, that's our chairman, one new alternate that has served for one year moved up, and one new member that has zero land use board experience. I guess that's why, in part, the people voted for elected planning board. With that said, I'd like to give my resignation.
Suzanne, I'm sorry to see this. Thank you for your years of service to the town.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else who would like to give us any public input? Hearing none, can I have a motion to go into non-public?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second? Paul?
Okay.
Dave?
Yep.
Yes, yes, okay. I guess...
Thank you, everybody.
You don't want to take it?